Mrs. George, if you'd be so kind to call the role, please.
Glenn Shipley.
I'm here.
Glen Lawson here.
Here.
Carrie Lee.
Yes.
Karen Paulson.
Here.
Deborah Bacon.
Here.
Glen Waters.
The President.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Spreman, would you be so kind to lead us in the pleasure of leading?
I have a voice call.
Oh, did you see? I'm sorry.
Room 11.
Room 11?
Michael Vaughn.
All right, well, that's great.
Thank you for coming. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thanks for coming, sir. While we are still standing, if we might just bow our heads and pray for a moment. Dear Lord, we ask for your guidance here tonight and your blessings. We ask for your blessings for the Las Vegas victims, 59 at current count that have expired, over 500 seriously injured, as well as the 15 individuals that have perished in the Santa Rosa, California, fire on the last day in the wine country, and probably more that will perish. As big as our problems are here in Coventry, let us remember those individuals, their families, all the victims, all their families, and what they'll be going through, their hardships for the future as we lead on here in Coventry tonight. Amen.
And Mr. Spreman, a evacuation emergency plan, please.
Case for an emergency, two exits in a red, go your right or left, take your right out, and please, don't block the exits. You ain't getting down there up there in the morning. Plenty of seats up in the front, plenty of them. So, probably 15 seats, so if anybody wants to sit down, please come up.
Thank you, Mr. Spreman. Okay, President's comments, just have a few. First of all, I hope everyone had a good Columbus Day weekend. I know the weather wasn't the greatest, especially for the Sineward Art Festival, artists and those attending. On a happy note, I've been asked by the Director of our Parks and Recreation, Ring of Blumenthal, to mention a couple of free upcoming events. They've been printed in the Kent County Times, but for those that have not read that, on Friday, October 13th, that's a good lucky day, there's a spooky movie night at the Guy Lefebvre Community Center where you can watch Hotel Transylvania on an indoor inflatable screen. Doors will open at 6:00, the movie begins at 6:30, and they'll be giving out free popcorn. So hopefully, those interested can attend, and the kids, I don't believe there's any age requirement on that particular night. The next notice is that on Friday, October 27th, two weeks later, the Parks and Rec are hosting Halloween Night of Lights. This is for ages 3 to 10, and it'll be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There'll be Halloween lights displayed, creepy music tunes, there'll be ventured through the pumpkin patch, carved jack-o'-lanterns glowing for all to see. Wear your best costume, and they ask that might be ones that can reflect in the black light, so they'll shine, and there's also the trick-or-treat bags with goodies. That's from the Parks and Rec. As requested, I wanted to make sure I mentioned them. Secondly, another pleasant experience, Judge Arthur Coppoli, I know this was also a nice write-up in the Kent County Times and also The Courier, our municipal court judge recently completed a book entitled Thirty Missions to Marie. It's a true account of our local war hero, Edward Jakes, who was from West Warwick, growing up, and recent, most recently, a Coventry resident. The book is all a true story. Mr. Jakes, as some of us well-remember, he was a distinguished individual, a gentleman. He was a World War II B-24 lead bombardier, and of course, he went on 30 missions, generally, I think 15 missions was about the expected, as I read the article, expected light expectancy. Mr. Jakes did 30 missions and got home safely. The judge has a book signing up in the Garden City Plaza at Barrington Books on Saturday, October 14th, from 2:00 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. And again, I think if you're available or doing some shopping, early shopping for Christmas, might want to just stop in and say hi, and maybe even buy a copy, for sure. Lastly, I think there are some individuals here that might be interested in our Coventry's ongoing sewer projects and related financial information that the town has scheduled, informational hearing for next Monday, well-stated in the Kent County Times and also on the website. It'll be Monday, October 16th, at the Coventry High School, starting at 6:00 p.m., I guess is still the time, right, the start time, Mr. Waters? Okay, and I know that Mr. Waters has some additional information to convey tonight. Of those that came tonight wishing to comment, it'll be at the end, and we hope that you can hold your comments to two minutes. Again, we're not going to be able to respond back, but if you want to register complaints also, you're welcome to send them to the Town Manager, email them, drop them off in writing, and they'll try to address them all next Monday night. That's the purpose of the meeting Monday with the Town Directors, to handle town questions from the town residents. But you're certainly welcome to stay for our exciting meeting tonight, and again, you'll have the chance to comment later on. Mr. Waters, is there anything you want to add to what I've already said in my President's comments?
Sure, I'll just say that the forum on Monday, October 16th, will be an opportunity for residents to ask questions of staff. We'll have the town staff there who work on the sewer for the town, as well as our sewer engineer. Be a question-and-answer session, we'll have a brief history of the sewers in town, we'll have an overview of the finances and how the Sewer Department Sewer Fund works in town and why it's in the situation it is today. It'll be an opportunity for residents to come out and have a direct conversation with all the staff who are connected to the sewers in town. So we'll have our sewer engineer consultant, our public works town engineer, public works director, our finance staff, myself, our town solicitor, and anybody else that's on staff who works with the sewers.
Okay, thanks, sir. All right, next we have on the agenda approval of the Town Council minutes from September 25th. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion approved.
Approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or amendments, or if not?
No, I do.
Okay.
Yes.
I didn't notice you had that.
No, sorry.
Right ahead.
Let's see, it is page 11. It's under the resolution affirming the award of contract for assessment of the phosphorus impairment of the upper dam. We had a very lengthy conversation about that with Mr. McGee. I had Director McGee regarding the phosphorus study that I was missing out of the report from 2007 DEM. We also discussed that the packet that we received, they were missing pages from the letter that was enclosed. I also questioned, you know, regarding the 2007 DEM report, I urged that Director McGee, along with all the council, Town Manager, and Town Solicitor, read that. It's a 174-page report, so that whole conversation was missing, so I was wondering, could we have that added in?
Well, I believe you said page 11, I don't think that's the right page.
Page 15, my packet, page 11.
Page, is it 12?
Okay, page 13, yep, but it's...
Oh, okay, 13, huh?
Yep.
All right, page 13, as long as Mrs. George knows what to add, then, you don't ask specifics right now, you just general?
No, I mean, I questioned why we were missing pages in the report that was given. I asked if I was the only one or if everyone else received it, no one else had a complete packet. I also questioned where was the 2007, 2007 DEM phosphorus study, it was a pretty detailed giving what we should be doing to protect Breezy Lake and so that it's not in the condition it is right now. I asked what the Town and Rhode Island DOT was doing, and Mr. McGee said he hadn't seen the report, so did nothing, and it was a very lengthy conversation, the whole conversation's missing, that's all.
Okay, well, so noted. Any other changes or amendments or notes?
Just like I, page, well, actually, page 13, fourth paragraph where Carlson asked questions, I also asked to have it verified that the town does, in fact, have clear title to that mon.
Breezy.
Mr. Borum, I'm sorry, Breezy. Mr. Borum said he thought we did, but I wanted to be absolutely sure, because there's always questions. Oh, there it is, no, sorry, the next one. Fifth paragraph, to verify that we do have clear title.
Okay, so noted, I guess. Mrs. George, you clear on those changes? We go on and vote for those minutes as the two additions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, minutes passed. Thank you. Next, you have council district updates. We usually start at the end, why don't we start with Mrs. Bacon, District 5 first?
Oh, okay. Just a few items. One of them, I just want to remind everyone, going through the residential neighborhood, schools are in session, please, 25 miles an hour, please stop at the stop signs, and when you see the stop signs on the side of the bus, school buses, please adhere to that. Also, I do have a question for Nick Borum. I've been getting, I was getting complaints over the weekend, on Sunday especially, that the neighborhoods surrounding 75 Airport Road, the smell of asphalt was overwhelming, people couldn't go outside, and especially at night, and they could hear the silos running. Is that permitted?
Is the, well, is what permitted?
It's Sunday, operating the silos.
Sunday.
And it's at night anyway, so there's no operation on Sunday, and the silos are operating.
Overnight operation, or operation...
I don't need to put you on the spot, on the spot, you can get back to me if you want.
I could look it up, if you want.
Okay.
If it's in the ordinances, I could look it up.
Because the residents didn't know, should they call the police? They weren't sure, so I said I would address that tonight.
I'll answer, please.
Okay, thank you, I do appreciate that. And thank you, Glenn, for letting everyone know about the sewer meeting, I will see everyone there, I will be in attendance. Thank you.
Mrs. Carlson, Mr. Vaughn.
Hey, good evening, everybody, it's great to see so many people here, love to see it more often, it'd be great if you all came, you know, but anyway, a couple of things. The fantastic Green Library Bacon Book Sale is October 29th, and they have really good baked goods and incredible London Marang pie, but get there early because the pies sell out. And also, speaking of Green Library, Mr. Waters and I will be hosting a town forum on Tuesday, the 17th, at 6:30 at Green Library. The topic will be the wind turbines, cause and effect of having them in District 1. The next thing is the, our library across the hall is having some really fun events this month for Halloween, including a showing of Psycho across the street in the annex with refreshments, so, really, people, you get to see Psycho in person, I mean, come on, really. I think it's Thursday, the 12th, which is this week, so I think that'd be just, you know, a hoot, get it, anyway. All right, so, now for the serious stuff, as they all know, it's fall, leaves are falling, they're very pretty, they're turning colors, they're falling off the trees, the sun is setting a little differently, and a lot of people in District 1 have increased flicker from the turbines. But we're going to talk about what the town's going to do about it next week at our forum. So be there because you might get some really good information. And that's it, thank you.
One thing, I forgot to ask something, I apologize, I was wondering, before the meeting began, a resident came up from Coventry Drive and made me an updated petition from Coventry Drive opposing the sewer program, so there are additional names given to all of you.
Okay, thank you. As far as District 4 goes, I've gone by the New Washington Trust Bank location, and it's looked like it's getting very close to being paved and opened. It was supposed to be a ribbon-cutting October 4th, and it didn't happen. I didn't push back, I'm sure, and I think within the month, we're going to have another outstanding bank here in Coventry in District 4. So I'm pleased to hear that, still looking for a new owner of the former Teo Tavern. I've seen people stopping by, and the doors being open, so I, maybe someone's looking at it, but it'd be nice if we could fill that, it's a great location, so if you know any rich restaurant owners, pass the word. District 2, Mr. LaBosnier, if you was the President.
I've spoken with a number of folks from the Hunter's Crossing area, again, in this, there's still a lot of concerns with people speeding and going through stop signs. With the increased development that we have out that way, there's, seems to be, you know, a lot more traffic, people trying to get home quicker, get out quicker, and they're blowing through a lot of the stop signs and speeding, so I'd like to ask for a little help in that area. And then, number two, we had, I had asked Rip Not a Little over, give me a hand with the, we're trying to get a crosswalk at Payne Field, so with a lot of the events that are happening over there, so, and to stand that, still under consideration, and a little more favorably so with the DOT, because it's a state road over there. Other than that, that's all I've got in District 2.
Thank you. District 3, Mr. McGee.
Yes, sir. I have a little statement, so if you'd have to read, there's been a lot of action going on in District 3, so just be a little patient with me while I read this little statement. Apparently, there is an attempt to recall me as District 3 Councilman. I was voted into this vision to make decisions. As difficult as they may be, every decision is made with the best interest of the majority of the taxpayers in the town of Coventry in mind. Contrary to social media, no decision is made with any personal gain in mind, ever has and never will be. I will not be deterred from making the difficult decisions because of a disgruntled taxpayer. I will continue to do the job that I was elected to do. The threat of a recall for every decision being made would deter people from seeking public office. A recall should only be allowed when there has been an illegal or immoral act that has not happened, I am governed with bold progress in mind. There was a lot of false information being put out on the social media, and the taxpayers need to know the facts before condemning actions to the Town Council. I do not and will not argue my point on social media. The cost of assessment is not $58,000, as stated on social media. It should be between $15,000 and $23,000, though we don't know the complete cost yet, that's what it should be. There are not any other streets at this time planned for sewers in District 3. Has social media warned all of District 3 streets that they were getting sewers? Another false statement. Myself and the Town Administrator agree that the notification to residents could have been informative, more informative, and has been rewritten and sent out to residents. The town did abide by the ordinance in notifying residents. The town has millions of dollars invested into the sewer infrastructure. We own three pumpkin stations, 23% of West Warwick Sewer Treatment Plant, and millions in bond money that has to be paid back. We also have hundreds of sewer customers that have already paid their assessment and cannot be ignored. They are dependent on our sewer system. The sewer program has been in effect well before I took office, and we have done our best to continue forward progress to keep the sewer fund sustainable. The Sewer Subcommittee and the Town Council voted in a unanimous decision to move forward with the Hazard Street Project. This is about clean water and being good for the environment. I do understand that this will cause some hardship and be difficult to pay for some taxpayers. I am currently in discussion with the Town Finance Director and the Town Manager to lower the interest rates from 6% to what the town pays, or half a percent more to cover administration costs. I fought in 2010 to drop the interest rate from 8% to 6%, and was successful. Hopefully, I can be successful with further reductions. If this project would have been done 10 years ago, the assessment would have been approximately 6,800. The cost of constructing sewers keeps rising, and the longer we wait, the more expensive it will be. If we stop all sewer projects in Coventry, then in two to three years, the sewer fund will run out of money, and the money will have to come out of the general fund. How do you explain this to Western Coventry taxpayers, who will probably never see sewers, that they must pay for the benefit of sewers in other districts of the town? I could go on and on, but I encourage all taxpayers that have an interest to attend an informative meeting on Monday, October 16th, at Coventry High School at 6:00 p.m., put on by the Coventry Town Manager and his staff to answer questions. Please come to the meeting to find out the facts instead of believing social media in the attempt to discredit the hard work by the Coventry Town Council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, B1, Mrs. George, please.
I'm going to do a presentation.
Oh, I am sorry, I did jump, I was transfixed, I think, with a report from District 3. My bad, my bad. A5, we have A5, and I even know the nice young, well, I don't know the young lady that came up, but said you were here, so I apologize twice now. Mr. Waters, do you want to make this introduction, the presentation?
Sure, for you, it's Ms. Carrie Gill, she's the Program Services Officer for the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources. Tonight, she'll be talking to the council about some of the programs that they have available for businesses and residents, and assistance that can help them down.
Thank you, very good. Good evening.
Hi, thanks so much for having me.
Our pleasure.
All right, can you hear me now?
There you go.
All right, so the purpose of this presentation is for the Office of Energy Resources to honor represent tonight, to go around to all of the communities in Rhode Island, knowing that as our energy costs are rising, we just want to make sure that everyone's aware of the no-cost and low-cost programs that we can offer support with. And so, the first part of this presentation will be a quick overview of offerings that are relevant for residents and businesses, so everyone here might be interested. And then, the second part of the presentation will be for municipal-specific energy projects. The purpose of this presentation is to give an overview, so I'm not going to go into depth about any one of these things, but I believe you have slides in your packet, and I would be more than happy to either answer questions or connect you with the appropriate people to give you more details about any of these programs. So, first, for residents and businesses, a lot of people don't realize this, but the utility actually does not make money off of how much electricity they sell you. They make their profit off of the cost to maintain the infrastructure, to deliver that electricity to you. And so, a lot of people question why National Grid would want to offer energy efficiency programs to residents and businesses. Well, it's, the bottom line is that they're not making money off of how much they sell, and because they're required to by Rhode Island law. So National Grid has an extensive suite of programs that include incentives and rebates for both residents and businesses to lower their energy use, and I encourage everyone to take advantage of them. I also, I know that Coventry values its farmland, right, and the rural areas out here. We do have audits that are specific to farms as well, that I wanted to point out. All of this information can be found on our website at energy.rigob, and I focus on energy efficiency, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions from residents and businesses and point you in the right direction. I also wanted to make note of the Solarize program, which has since stopped taking applications for the fall, but Solarize is a program where residents who want to have solar panels on their roofs can group together to get discount because they're buying in bulk from solar panel contractors. And so, if you want more information on that, I can connect you with the right person. Next up is the Commercial Pace program. I know, I was speaking to Michael Behr from the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, he regretted that he couldn't be here tonight, but he did give me an update to provide to Mr. Waters, he said that he spoke with you and the solicitor last week, and he's finalizing edits to the municipal agreement, and we'll have that to you later this week. Something that's coming up in the pipelines that's similar to the commercial property-assessed Clean Energy CPace, is an offering similar for residents, where it would be the same style, where the lien is attached to the property itself rather than to the person, and hopefully, that will help finance some cash-flow-positive energy efficiency and renewable energy projects for residents. So something like that will be out in early 2018, and we're happy to provide more information on that when that does become available. The next slides are specific for the municipality, so we're going to go in the order of how you would go through an energy project. So first, the most important thing is that you're tracking your energy use. I know, I've tried to connect the town, and I believe that you've spoken to Mary Colbert, she's an energy fellow at the University of Rhode Island. We funded her and others at the University of Rhode Island to help get all the communities to have accounts on Energy Stars Portfolio Manager. It's a free online platform for tracking energy use and energy costs. And so, she's available until December to make sure that Coventry is all set up. Starting in 2018, National Grid is actually going to be automating an upload of your energy bills to Portfolio Manager, so it'll be really easy to continually track how much energy the town is using and how much that's costing the town. And hopefully, there are those, so that you can not only track your use, but you can identify low-hanging fruit for energy improvements to help save the town some energy. So step one is benchmarking. Step two is to start with energy efficiency, so first, reduce the amount of energy that the town is using in public facilities, and then, from there, you can look into any sort of, you know, rooftop-mounted renewables, for example. So again, there are National Grid incentives and rebates that are available to the town. I spoke with Jerry Drummond earlier, he's National Grid's municipal liaison, so I'm sure many of you are familiar with him. He gave Coventry a really great compliment, he said that you're the poster child for comprehensive energy efficiency. So, kudos to you guys for doing a great job so far. He said that you...
Can I get his name again?
Jerry Drummond.
Okay, thanks.
So, what he said is that you have done some very comprehensive energy efficiency projects here for your municipal buildings and your school buildings. If you are continually interested in improving energy use in those buildings and taking advantage of more projects, you can talk to him, and I can connect you if you don't have his contact info, and he can help you optimize the incentives and rebates that National Grid offers. I'm not, have you, have you all transitioned your streetlights to LEDs? No, okay, so that...
The streetlights are actually under fire districts.
Okay, all right, all right, so I'll skip over that, but if you want to look into that, I can connect you with the right people that'll give you more information about doing that. Our office, it's interesting that you were talking about wind, so we do offer assistance with renewable energy projects and citing, and so, we do want to stay informed of what's going on here, so I can connect you with our renewable people within the office, and yeah, hopefully, we can stay, stay in touch about that, to make sure that everything's working out well. And if you do have any other questions about either renewable energy projects or energy efficiency projects, we're happy to offer assistance for the town and for residents and businesses. We have some purchasing mechanisms in place, I'm not sure... I'm not sure if you've used any of these for your prior energy projects, but I did want to point them out. They're for turnkey projects, and they follow state purchasing laws. So hopefully, that can streamline any projects that you do decide to undertake. As far as financing, we offer the-- well, we-- in conjunction with the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, the Infrastructure Bank offers the Efficient Buildings Fund. It's a low-interest rate, long-term loan for deeper energy savings projects. We actually are just having our round of applications closed tomorrow for that. But that happens twice a year where you can apply for financing for some of these projects. And then the next things are things that are coming up in the future. So as I'm sure you're aware, there's the Green Buildings Act, which requires all new municipal buildings to be LEED certified, something that our office is working on, and that will be out by the end of this calendar year, is a stretch code that is specifically designed to not only meet the Green Buildings Act, but also optimize your incentives that you can get from National Grid for complying with the Green Buildings Act. And so if you have any new construction, I would definitely point you to that in the future. Almost last is that we do aggregate energy procurement with municipalities. So we try-- our next auction is going to be in 2018 for natural gas and 2020 for electricity. But what we're trying to do is to get municipalities to come together, and then because there's more demand, we can potentially get lower electricity and natural gas rates. So if that's something that you're interested in, I can connect you with the person in our office that is running that auction. And then last, we do want to stay in touch. I'm aware that your community is doing really great things with energy, and we want to know what's going on. And we do have-- we-- last year, we started doing a Lead by Example Award. And so we want to make sure that we're knowing what's going on in the communities and that we're helping out as much as we can to support you. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point. Again, all of this information is on our website, energy.rigob. And for anyone that has any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. I can leave business cards, and I believe you all have my contact information as well.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. We do have quite a package here, and I was trying to follow it as you were going. You met with Mr. Waters previous, of course, a few times or--
I went-- we--
By email? Oh, all right. So you found the town hall, and make sure you are a visitor to us. Is it something the town calls you then? Are you a state employee? Is that it? Working for all these-- with these entities? Is that--
So I'm going to point out the Office of Energy Resources.
Right.
Yeah, and I do energy efficiency specifically. But I believe Mr. Waters and I talked previously. Michael, I was a PhD student at the University of Rhode Island when I was helping doing the energy benchmarking.
And you have a business card, Mr. Waters, because I don't? You've got a few, huh? Oh, kind of. Okay. You had mentioned business card, so that's all right.
Sure, yep.
That's all right.
Class A, just--
Right here, okay. Yeah, any questions at the council for-- yeah.
Mr. Tebow, do we do an energy audit this right now? I mean, now that we've transitioned from direct energy or the grid over to wind energy?
The last energy audit that was conducted was prior to the performance energy bond proceeds being utilized to make the upgrades of the buildings.
So is it time to do another one?
I'll refer to the manager on that.
Sure. We always do an energy audit.
Well, it would be good to know, you know, I've asked before. We're coming up on a year where we're supposedly getting supplied by Mr. Dubisqually. And I'd really like to know, are we saving any money? Are we spending more money? How's it looking using the Portsmouth turbine? Because if we don't get it from the Coventry turbines, we get it from Portsmouth, Rhode Island. So I'd like to know where we stand on that.
So we haven't had an opportunity as far as staff time to pursue an energy audit. I know it's on bomb stimulus, and my stimulus has still been here that there is assistance from OVR for that. I'm also curious, and the portfolio manager, I don't think I've ever been introduced to that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we've-- well, through your ID, Mary can come and provide a free training for whoever wants to learn how to use Portfolio Manager. And she'd be more than happy to help make sure that all of your accounts are present on Portfolio Manager so that when National Grid does that automatic upload, you all will have just continuous records from, you know, the past couple of years. And that will help assess how much energy you're using. If you've done some recent energy projects, hopefully, that'll help you be able to see energy savings from those projects. And also, the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank has a consultant, Cadmus, that does offer technical assistance as well with those sorts of things. So I can put you in contact with all of those people and help out with that.
I know that you're here for municipal side of this, but I do encourage everybody, if you get a chance, call National Grid and ask about the RISE program. They'll come to your house. They'll do an energy audit. They'll actually replace all your light bulbs. They'll see what, you know, you've got drafts coming in, especially now we're going into the winter. It's a great program. We've used it. They give you recommendations if you want, you know, extra insulation in the house, what kind of insulation. And it's-- I probably have 70 new light bulbs. Now, they'll take your old light bulbs away, so you can't keep them, but they will give you some really awesome new light bulbs. And it's a great program, and it does help you save money.
Yes, agree. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else ready now?
Yeah, no. I forget the gentleman's name when he came here in May. Michael. Michael. We asked a lot of questions of Michael, and so did our finance director and our tax collector. And they submitted the questions. Have those questions been answered? Because we don't have anything in our packet, but that list of questions and answers.
That's a great question. I was unaware of that exchange, but I will certainly follow up with Michael about that.
We have had that dialogue, the questions, the comedian that you were talking about, that the finance director and myself and the councilor had. We brought those questions to OVR and had them review it along with the CPace agreement.
And that's what he's going to get back to you on? Is that not the same?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's what you said earlier.
Okay, and what kind of consumer protection does the state of Rhode Island offer? Because I know this is getting national attention. I know out in Congress is going to be looking at it. I believe Senator Cotton is introducing because of the consumer protection. And I'm really concerned with the high interest rates, everything else that has taken place in the past, especially with R-Pace and with CPace. So what kind of protection will Rhode Island offer our residents?
So that's a great question, and unfortunately, I don't have the expertise to answer that. So I'm going to defer the answer to Michael Behr at the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, who's overseeing the program. I don't want to mis-speculate.
Okay, and you were saying how, you know, the town, we have our solar arrays. What I have been told, and I want to confirm, is we have solar panels, rooftop panels on our annex, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Are they functioning? Because I heard they are not functioning. The inverter is broken?
That's correct. They're not functioning.
They're not functioning. And how much does it cost the town of Coventry every month? We actually pay that company, correct? We're not getting any money, correct? We actually-- we get billed and we send that money to have their solar panels on our rooftop.
I know there's a groove between the town for purchasing energy at a fixed cost that was done, and is this Mr. Tebow's 2004, if you recall?
No, I don't.
But I couldn't tell you how much we're paying on a monthly basis versus how much we're saving.
Okay, could we have that? I mean, that would be something great. Okay, so and I guess, you know, one of my big concerns is, you know, with this-- the CPace and R-Pace are the unsecured loans. I also asked the question. I don't know if I got on that list. I don't know. Maybe Bob, you could tell me. Does this affect our bond rating at all with this? Do you know?
No.
No. Okay, it does not?
No.
Okay.
We-- like most of Waters has said, myself, Mr. Waters, an associate, I had a conference call with the gentleman, CPace, and their attorney. Was their attorney on the line? He wasn't available, I think. But we went through all the questions that came from council and from staff. And Mr. Gorham will correct me if I'm wrong, but all the answers to the questions were satisfactory answering.
They're supposed to have over the draft, putting the modifications in the agreement. But we haven't seen that yet.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
The attorney for, I think it's the Infrastructure Bank, if I'm not mistaken, was going to put our recommendations and demands into a new agreement. It's going to modify the agreement that they came and presented last time that you had so many questions about.
I still have more questions.
Right, but let me just tell you what's going to happen. They are going to modify that agreement with the changes that we discussed in the conference that we had with them. And at that point, we're going to examine it, and I'll make sure you get a copy of that. But they said they were going to address the many questions that the tax collector and others had about implementing this agreement through our administration in the town. That was the big concern, and that's what we addressed.
Thank you very much for coming on tonight.
I also would like to see an energy audit. We had spent a lot of money recently in the last few years doing energy efficient projects to, you know, the annex and town buildings. And I think we did have a report on what we were saving, but it would be nice to have a yearly report on that to make sure we're still having continued savings. So that's great that you offered that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll connect Mr. Waters with Mary Colbert and Jerry Drummond and help put that together for you and arrange those three building energy audits.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming on tonight. Okay, now we're at B1 on the agenda. Mrs. George.
A resolution appointing the following members to the Coventry School Building Committee: Craig Levis, Don Corleone, Jason Martin, Robert Tebow, Amy Anzalone, Don Hallert, Sarah Mangiorelli, and William Finnegan.
Okay, Mr. Waters, are you and Mr. Tebow want to explain this?
Sure. Actually, we have Ms. Mangiorelli from the school department.
I did see her, didn't I?
We have to talk to the council about it, and she can take over if she would like.
Okay.
All right, so thank you for having me come tonight. I'll try and be brief, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. So the school department is in the process of applying for a Stage 1 application for necessity for school construction. This is a three-part process that will allow us to receive housing aid reimbursement for eligible projects through the Department of Education. It's a very prescribed application. The packet that I handed out is the guidance for all three stages that we're doing. The first deadline for Stage 1 is October 16th, and it requires us to have the town council approve the school committee that is prescribed, or the positions prescribed on page 30 on the packet for our building committee. Just to give you a little bit of a background, Coventry is eligible for 47.6% reimbursement on any of their capital improvements that are qualified. So just to use as an example, had this been a place where we just did the Western Elementary School well upgrade, that was about $60,000. We would have received $28,000 back, which we would have been able to put back into the schools. And then if we use that as capital improvements as well, we would have received 47.6% of that money back. So this is a really great opportunity to maximize resources, to not leave housing aid on the table for projects that really need to be done within the schools. Going through this process will give us a five-year approval through RIDE. We're going the fast track, so we're not doing major renovations. We're not looking to overhaul any schools, build new schools. This is really just to maintain the facilities that we have so that we can put a long-term process in place.
Okay, I just had a question. This is a free group as far as cost goes. It just gets Coventry in the running. Is that it with these individuals? Which I see where they have to come from as far as agencies, departments, Town Finance Director, et cetera. So it's just a matter of getting the names to RIDE.
Correct.
And then you, as the Coventry School and the town, we inquire when we have something we can build and hopefully get, what, 47%?
47.6%.
Okay, 48%.
Yes.
All right, that's good. Well, hey, that's good. If we'd have to pay anyhow for these improvements and getting it back from RIDE because we'd have all our eggs in a row, that's great.
Right.
That's good.
So and just to clarify, the building committee is free. There's no additional compensation that is going to the building committee. However, as part of this application process, which is why we're taking it in stages, RIDE requires an architectural feasibility study to be done. Even though the Jacobson Report was just done on a statewide basis, that is a requirement. However, the school committee has said that we have issued that RFP, that it will be strictly based on the cost that comes back, and we'll do a cost spend at that time to say whether or not we want to move forward with this process. Unfortunately, this is a RIDE requirement that we cannot get around, even though we're not looking to do any major overhauls. That's unfortunately something that's prescribed. So we will take this one step at a time and make sure that it's in our best financial interest, both now but also for the long term. 47.6% for five years for regular renovations is a lot of money.
Just on this needs assessment that RIDE's requiring, are they going to charge the town for that?
Where we come into places, we would have to hire an independent architecture and engineering firm to come through and do a feasibility study, and that's where the cost is going to come in.
I see, and then that just meets their requirement.
That meets their requirement, correct.
Any ideas, Mrs.--
I do not want to speculate. It's been a couple of years since I've looked at them. It's not cheap to do, but again, once we've kind of put it in a long-term perspective of these are the amount of projects we want to do over five years, it might seem a little more palatable to make that investment beginning at 47.6% over the five years.
And we have heard from our superintendent much maintenance is in order.
Yes, it is.
And needed. Okay. Any other questions to the council at this time?
I have a question. Would it be the timeframe for having to get this architectural feasibility study done? And when does the five-year, you know, the clock start after that is put in? Or from the time that we're signing this?
Right, so all of the stages really have to be done within-- by March 2018, I believe, if March. I'll double-check that, see. But it's right before the end of the fiscal year. And we can start doing projects. Our first year would be up until June 30th. And then we'll run on a fiscal year, so we'll have four more years after that. And then we'll have to go through this process again.
So just to clarify, this is part of the big report that came out that was statewide about conditions of our buildings, our school buildings, correct?
No, this is not part of it. This is the Rhode Island Department of Ed's requirements to be eligible for housing reimbursement.
Okay.
So that report was really done to provide information about the needs across the state in schools, but this is basically their funding mechanism for us to get state reimbursement aid.
So that is a whole nother issue we've got to face at some point, right?
Well, we can look at them together.
I mean, everybody knows, a lot of people know that the report came back, and just about all of our schools are deficient, having issues.
Correct.
They need to be brought up, whether it's technology or the building itself. They're aging out.
Correct. So how this would go together would be if we had this application approved. So just speaking of that report, there's about $50 million worth of expenditures that are needed in our schools. If this was approved and we moved forward on taking care of some of those replacements, we would receive the 47.6% back on the recommendations of the deficiencies in the school. So we're really using them in tandem. The report gives us an idea of the deficiencies. This gives us a mechanism to help fund the improvements of the deficiencies.
Okay, and then if we get the money, then it's more than the five years for a timeline to use it?
Correct, correct. The money comes in. Typically, my understanding is, from a town perspective, if it was a bonded project, that money goes back to help pay the debt service for projects that were funded out of, you know, the local general fund budget. That reimbursement comes back, and we can use that to help fund the next project. So we can really try to build some momentum in getting some capital improvements done by continuing to reinvest that reimbursement back into the schools and continue to get that 47% reimbursement.
Very good. Thank you. There's no other questions, then I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion may be in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Guys, have a-- thank you for coming out tonight. Okay, next, we have B2. Mrs. George.
Resolution approving a change order--
Resolution approving a change order for Coventry landfill remediation project.
Okay. Mr. Waters or?
Sure. What you have for you is the resolution that was discussed at the last council meeting where our landfill environmental attorney, Mr. Farzai, and Mr. Hiddinger, representing Alliance Environmental, our environmental consultant for the landfill, and discussed the need for the change order. This resolution is made to act on the habit of the town council to represent the town for the primary responsible party group and accept the change order, which was attached to the packets. There's a memo from GZA explaining the change order and the need for the change order.
Okay. I know that we asked the question of one need and required, and I do like the bottom of the resolution where, on the first page anyhow, that most likely it will be offset by the revenue the landfill takes in to cover the cost that initially the town would have to pay out. But again, correct me if I'm wrong, there's really no choice in this. Is that correct? To get these necessary changes?
Right, so just the remediation of the landfill?
Right.
Which needs to be done? Is something that the town was ordered to do?
Yes.
Before I started with the town, I believe we're under a court agreement that the council at the time accepted and we were carrying it out. The, I think currently, the change order pertains to increased oversight of how the remediation of the landfill will actually be carried out. So more monitoring of the remediation has increased the cost and thus the change order.
Right, and I think I asked at that last meeting is that we will have assistance in paying for this, do we not the other entities that were part of the polluting the landfill?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, the 40% or something like that?
Yes, we represent 60% and the other 40% represent 40%.
So we're not paying the loan and again, we have to, you know, complete the requirements to, we end up capping it off. And I think I asked also, the scheduled date of completion, was it 2021?
It's still on time.
Right, I know that. 2021, all right. Well, it'll be here before we know it, that's for sure. Okay, any other questions regarding this resolution?
I have one. I am reluctant to approve a change order. I mean, we thought we were pretty thorough when we initially took this program, all of the cost. It kind of got us, you know, telling us that it's a requirement, but I thought GZA was, gave us a breakdown of what they were going to spend and it's against my better judgment, but we're basically told we have to do this, you know, to continue the project. And I, I'm hoping that we can have some good oversight on it. It's just tough, we really don't have anybody there on data, you know, data basis and I'd like to make sure that, you know, you would check and just go through with GZA again and make sure because, like I said, they were initially at the, you know, at the beginning of the program, they gave us a break, so what was on the cost and I don't like change orders.
Correct. The town participates in the bi-weekly landfill staff coordination meetings, again, Alliance Environmental, Sir Hiddinger represents the town's interests. They do periodic reviews, GZA oversees the completion of the remediation of landfill. I see, oversee Dave Grigorio, who is the contractor carrying out the actual remediation.
Is Mr. Hiddinger the one who will work on our behalf to make sure? So you're comfortable, you've had conversations with him, you're comfortable with him being charged, Mr. Moore?
I am. Certainly comfortable with Mr. Hiddinger and Mr. Farzai, they have represented our interests beyond my expectations, probably.
I have a question.
Sure.
The change order was for the time, $64,637 for the time period, December 16 through May 17. And has estimated that costs for similar services going forward will be approximately $87,000 for 12 months, beginning in June of 17, last June.
That's correct.
So now we're in October, so why has it taken this long for us to see this?
Because there's questions about the need for the change order. There was, as the attached memo lays out the case for the need by GZA, so Mr. Hiddinger and Alliance and Mr. Farzai, as well as the other primary responsible parties, had a lot of complaints for the need for the change order.
No, that means, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I agree with Mr. McGee that, you know, I don't like change orders. We've discussed change orders ad nauseam before and this seems to me that now that it's October, we're, let's see, 10, 10 months passed when the period for the first $64,000, $65,000. I have a real problem with waiting that long for this bill to come due. I don't, you know, I just think...
It's, it's just from the timeframe that it came to our attention and the amount of time it took for all the different parties to vet the need for the change order, the additional costs and to make sure that it was included. And again, the change order cost will be covered by the increased revenues that the landfill takes in from...
Likely.
Correct.
It's not positive, it's likely to be covered.
Right. I'd say it's a high probability.
But first, we have to pay $65,000 plus $87,000. Is that right?
We do not directly pay it, it will come out of the increased revenues that the landfill has already taken in.
So how much is that?
Seven thousand going forward.
Forward.
It's a total amount due, but the PFP paid this year, that's why we paid the 64, which is left of it. So it'll probably be $64,000 every 12 months here on in, you know, because the PFP's paid this year.
Till 2021.
Yeah, correct.
So then what's total?
I don't have that.
They will have to come in front once again next year, perhaps.
Do it again?
At every time, there'll be a change order.
Do we know at this point, you know, the word likely bothers me, but...
Well, the town took out a $5...
What do we have now that we can cover the cost? How much do we have now?
The town, the town took out a $5 million bond to...
I hate the word bond. I don't know how I feel about bonds.
Another bond to remediate the landfill project.
Right.
Today, we've only spent a small portion of that money and since we've enacted the change in the acceptance of the butt soils, the increased revenue that the landfill has taken in has covered our cost 100%.
I think that was stated in the last meeting too. The whole point is to get this project done, to get it done economically. If nobody's comfortable with change of orders, but in that it has to be done, we'll bring in more soils so we can get it done faster and that we're only paying 60% of it and it'll get done that much faster, hopefully by 2021, and we'll stay on the timeline. You can balk, you can say no, and then you just probably kick it out to 2030, if we can get the soils in.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, again, we're dipping into the, into funds, you know?
Well, this won't dip into the bond money that the town borrowed.
Okay.
Right now, the revenues that the landfill project has taken in will cover this expense.
For this year?
Correct.
We may not be able to do that moving forward. We should never know.
Correct. That's, that's...
We already have had trouble with bud, so it could happen again where we can't get it, correct?
Correct. But right now, the way things are going, our revenues are exceeding our expenditures. There's some different...
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
It's a motion.
I'll do a second. Do we have a second on this resolution?
I will reluctantly second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, guys have it. Next, B3.
Resolution declaring that the Northern Arnold Road sewer project on contact A.A. is substantially...
Okay, Mr. Waters?
Sure, at this time, I'll call up Director of Finance, Mr. Tebow, as well as the Town Engineer, Mr. Doyle.
Okay. Come on, gentlemen.